Right. For me, as a board member, that sort of helps give me comfort. We've had multiple conversations today in compensation and other places, and I feel like that, to me, is sort of the motivating factor when we think about some of the decisions is if we're being compliant with the policy that we have in place, unless we want to change the policy, which I don't think we do at this point, then it just seems like it's a math problem, right?
I think that's right. I think the decision here, if you're going to follow your policy, which is what boards -- that's what boards do. I think the decision is pretty clear. And for the new board members, I'll also point out there is a second allocation. If after the first allocation has been made, the system, the plan is more than two standard deviations above 100% funded, so in this case, that'd be over 130% funded, then a second allocation is made, which is half of the surplus or the reserve above 130%. So, for instance, if we were 140% funded, the second allocation would bring it back down, could bring it back down to 135% funded. That's not where we are today, but for the new board members, just pointing out, there is a second allocation. So, what this would do is the allocation is not applied to retirees, so we can see that their obligation doesn't change. We've got two columns here, one without additional credits, the second if the additional credits are granted. However, the inactive members and the active members' benefits both go up by 4.36%. That's worth $394 million, and the funded percentage comes down from 124.58% to 120.11%, assuming the board follows its policy and grants the additional earnings credit. The cash balance benefit program is a very similar story, except here, the assumed return, it's different asset allocation, the assumed return's a little bit lower, 6.5%, so to fill the earnings credits up to 6.5%, it would require 3.86 additional earnings credit. That also works with the math. Standard deviation here is a little bit smaller, 13%, but otherwise, the cash balance program is operating very similarly to the defined benefit supplement program. I'll point out that the cash balance program is much smaller, therefore, the additional earnings credit for the cash balance benefit program would only be $10 million. I'll also point out that these two plans cover two different populations. The cash balance benefit program is primarily for part-time employees, whereas the defined benefit supplement program, and that's their primary benefit, for the defined benefit supplement program supplements, that's why it's called that, the members who are in the defined benefit program and some additional contributions on some additional salary amounts and so forth are contributing to that program. So, looking ahead to next year, if the investment returns achieve the assumed return, the surplus is likely to increase for both programs. As of the next valuation, they'd be likely able to grant additional earnings credits again. Looking at what it would take on the downside to remove the reserve, it would take approximately a negative 10% return in, actually, in the fiscal year that we're in right now, to eliminate surplus. And that negative 10% return, remember, that's actually 17% below the 7% assumption, or 16.5% below the 6.5% assumption. Actuaries don't think zero is breaking even. We think of 0% as like a 7% loss, so negative 10, we would think is a negative 17% loss. So, the action items here are that the board's policy would call for granting additional earnings credits of 4.36% for the defined benefit supplement program, which would, in combination with the minimum interest credit, which has already been granted, make a total of 7%, and for the cash balance benefit program, 3.86%, which in combination with the minimum interest credit, would raise the total up to 6.5%.
So, basically, in your presentation, you presented 5B and 5C together.
Yes, that's correct.
For board members' clarification, because I was looking at 5B, and I'm like, oh, there's only one recommendation, so he's combined the defined benefit supplement and the cash balance, so that's 5B and 5C.
I appreciate that.
That's okay. No, that's all right.
Partly because actuaries are confusing animals, but more so, more so because we want to respect your time, and these programs are so similar that we kind of try and present them in parallel to you.
We ask it, we ask a lot of math, I will say, but you actually explain it very well, so I get that.
And if there are no other questions, for the DBS, the recommendation, the resolution is on TRB 143, and for the cash balance, it's on TRB 179. So, those are the two motions in front of you right now.
But aren't they both on the PowerPoint right here?
Yes.
Okay, so I was gonna say, it's hard to go back and forth between those two items. Okay, so Dana.
Move approval of granting the additional earnings credit for the DBS and the cash balance plan.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, B and C have been approved. Thank you.
Next, it's gonna be over the Medicare Premium Payment Plan.
All right, we're at 5.
Okay, deference to Sharon.
Medicare.
I'm gonna have very little math in this one.
No, I was kind of liking it. I just felt like I was beefing up on my, it's good, I was staying with you.
Mark always likes to present that, because that's good news, really good success story about how that DBS and CBB are set up.
No worries.
So, we haven't talked about this for a couple of years, is the MPP, the Medicare Premium Payment Program. Just want to go over this quickly. There's not too much, nothing really new here. We have no material changes since the last valuation. What you have is an unfunded actual obligation of $287 million, and that's really equal to what the actual obligation is, because the way the Medicare Premium Payment Program is funded, there's a, there is a, there is a pool of assets called the THBF, is the Teacher's Health Benefit Fund, but that really just acts as a pass-through. Contributions go through, and then they pay out the members' benefits. So, really, what we do is, well, under the board policy, I should say, is allocate future contributions to pay that $287 million. And we, in the DB program, we include that as a liability, because we know these future contributions, we need to account for those future contributions, and so that's how we do it. So, just quickly, the process, the assumptions are the same as the DB program. There are a couple that are specific to the MPP program, which is an enrollment assumption for people who are not age 65 in particular. We do not know if they're gonna have coverage somewhere else, and are, again, not gonna need to join the MPP program, because they can get Part A coverage somewhere else. So, we have a probable enrollment for those people in both Part A and Part B. I mean, sorry, just for Part A, Part B is a closed group, and for Part B, for both Part A and B, we have a trend assumption, that is, what is gonna be the increase in medical costs going forward in the future. And no changes since the last valuation, but we review these assumptions with the next experience study. Benefits, just to remind you, this is, both these groups are closed group. For Part A, it's people who've retired on or before June 30, 2012, so they're all retirees, and as I said, but some of these are over 65, or they could possibly join Medicare later. Part B is a very small group, and for those people, those are people who are late enrolls in Part E, and actually, it's a penalty for late enrollment that's paid from this program. And this just kind of reminds you what the premiums are. For Part A is, it increased from 422 to 437, so $437 a month, or about $5,000 a year, is generally what the people in the Part A program are getting. And as you can see, just, as I said, the $287 million unfunded actual obligation for the MPP program is added to the DB program because of the way the funding works. And the MPP program unfunded actual obligation has been declining over the years, you can see quite significantly. Partly it's because it's a closed group, but over the last 10 years, you've had lower than assumed Part A increases, and also, the enrollment has just continued to be less than we've expected. We've adjusted our assumptions, and you can see, particularly between 2011, 2012, we significantly lowered the enrollment assumptions based on experience, and it continues to roll less. So, bottom line is, this is, you know, this is the amount that is included, incorporated in the DB program, that is funded through future contributions, and I don't think, there's no action item required by the board on this. And that concludes 5D. So, we're happy to get any questions on that, if you'd like.
And just to correct one thing, there was an action item. Historically, you've adopted the report, so the resolution is on page TRB 209, and again, it's just to accept, adopt receipt of the valuation report.
Okay. Dana.
So, David, I'm trying to think of, because we still have people that are actually enrolling in it, but that number's very much dwindling. When does the, so, you had to retire prior to 2012, or you had to retire in 2012 to be eligible, and you need to sign up for Medicare. If they've retired, they're gonna sign up.
And you also have to be hired before 1986, so that's another requirement, which makes the population even smaller.
So, how do we determine the possible demographics of the people that are still out there that might sign up? I mean, have we, between their age and when they had to sign up and when they retired, have we hit that, that there's not anybody left eligible?
No, there are still some. Like, if someone retired at age 55 in 2011, that's eight years ago, they're 63, they could still elect to go into Medicare at age 65, and they may be eligible to enroll into the program, so it's all.
So, we probably then only have a couple more years to take a look at that then, right?
Yeah, the bulk of the people are gonna be the next three years.
And so, we'll know within a couple more years what the actual final kind of population would be then?
Yeah, pretty close to it.
Pretty much. Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. I didn't think you would have it.
Yeah, we actually.
I couldn't do that math in my head.
We actually do a projection of program membership in our report.
Karen.
Mine's just, just almost this identical, so it seems like, so then the numbers are just going down and down and down, right?
Correct. And eventually, there will be no more obligations in that program, yes. And you can sort of, if you're interested to see, it's on, I just had it open, and I flipped too quick. TRB 194.
Oh, 194.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and you can see, the Part B is much further down the path here, and you can see how they're, they've almost completely dropped off the map.
Right, okay.
So, here, you can kind of see a projection of future benefit payments for that program.
The average Part B enrollee is over 80.
Like David said, the resolution is on TRB 209. I entertain a motion to adopt the report.
I move second.
So, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's been adopted.
Okay.
All right.
Next item is 5E, the lump sum debt benefit. This is an action item. As a board member, there are few areas where you actually can decide on benefit levels for our members. This is one of those items. What we're talking about is the lump sum debt benefit that is paid to the survivors of either our active members or retired members, and the benefits vary depending if you're an active member, if you're part of what is called Coverage A or Coverage B, and if you're a retired member, it's the same amount for all. So, the board has the authority to adjust the benefit. We look at this on an annual basis. The law states that if you were to decide to increase a benefit, and again, you're not required to do so, but it has to be somehow linked with California inflation. Historically, the board has increased the debt benefit eight times. If you go to TRB 211, we have a table there that shows historically what the, when the increases took place. The last increase was adopted by the board last year. The amounts were increased to 6,372 for retired members and active members on the Coverage A, and to 25,488 for active members on the Coverage B. Now, as we do every year, we've provided options in the agenda item if you were to decide to increase it. They are on TRB 212. As we have done in the past, one of the options we always present is, what if we were to bring this benefit in line with inflation, since that authority was given to the board? This is the first line that you see on TRB 212, that would bring the lump sum debt benefit for Coverage A in the retired members to about $9,319. And then, we have provided an option, which is the third one in that table, in line with the action the board took last year, which is, what if we only increase it with the inflation in California in 2018, which was about 3.5%? So, you can see the amount there. And then, we've also provided a middle option of 1%, more as a, just so you can get an idea of what each percent of an increase would do. What I would remind you is, the statute does say the board may increase the benefit. This is not a requirement for you to do it. And right now, at least staff's recommendation, taking into account the information you just heard from Mark and Nick about the funding of our system, about the fact we are 64% funded, that contribution rates are still scheduled to increase. Any action taken by the board today will increase costs long-term. Some of them, as shown on page 212, have, are not really material to the funding of the system, the numbers, but we're still talking about the potential cost. At 3.5% is a $30 million increase in obligation that would result in a slightly higher contribution rate. Our recommendation is to keep the debt benefit as is for one more year, and with this, I would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the committee? So, you heard the recommendation, right? So, we hadn't increased it for, and I know this is always a tough one for us, so I'll just say that. And then, just, I think you gave the history, David, about the last time, we made an increase last year, and then before that, it was, in what year?
2002.
2002, it was 16 years.
Yeah, 16 years. So, we made, we made a change this year. Staff is recommending that we not make an increase this year. Karen?
I know I spoke up last year, and I was really excited to do that, but after seeing, hearing all the numbers and everything, and I, and I was recognized by the retirees that with the increase, that it was a good thing, and it had been many years that it hap, since it had happened. But I think for this year, I think I will go along with the recommendation because of the numbers that you've given us, and the numbers that we've seen prior, and all the things that are coming forward. Thank you for your report, and I'm gonna go along with your recommendation. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I do make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. It's been approved.
Okay, and for item 5F, I will let Jordan Fassler to present it to you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jordan Fassler. I'm an actuary here in Actuarial Resources. Each year, the board adopts interest and contribution rates that are used in the administration of the various programs. The rates adopted here will be in effect for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and this item is composed of seven separate resolutions. The first is the regular interest rate. This is the rate that is used to charge interest on items such as when a member elects to redeposit previously refunded contributions, installment payments on service credit purchases, or to charge interest on late payments by the employer. By law, this rate is equal to the actuarially assumed interest rate, which is currently 7%. Item two is the credited interest rate for the defined benefit program. This is the interest rate that is credited to members' account or member contributions to the DB program. Recall that in September of last year, the board reviewed its policy on determining this rate, and elected to continue to base this rate on two-year treasuries. Items three and four are the minimum interest rates for the CB and DBS programs, respectively. This is the guaranteed rate that Mark had talked about for those programs that are credited on account balances for the plan year, and these are based on 30-year treasuries. Summary, the specific rates being recommended for items one through four can be found on TRB 224.
Jordan, is it possible, I just, I feel, I would like to just kind of go through them one by one, if that's okay? So, could we just, I mean, don't have to go into a lot of detail, but I just think, it could just be me, but it's a lot of specific information. I want to make sure that we, as a board, are clear on what we're voting on each one. So, is that all right? Can we just start with the regular interest rate?
Yeah, so the regular interest rate, the resolution is on TRB 226, and the recommendation is 7% specified by the law.
So, the regular interest rate, you're recommending, everybody see where that is, recommending that we keep it at 7% per annum for this next year? Any questions? Okay. Then moved and approved. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Okay, the credited interest rate.
Thanks, Jordan. Just walking through it.
Yeah, the credited interest rate is on TRB 228, and the recommendation is 2.60%.
So, can you give again the credited interest rate? Give us a snapshot again.
Oh, yeah, the credited interest rate, so that's the interest that is credited to members' accounts in the DB for member contributions.
Right, okay.
And just to add real quick, this is a number that would only come into play to impact someone's benefit if they somehow elected to take a refund of their contributions, which is not something we would recommend, but in case, it's mostly, we see that mostly from members who don't have enough years of service to vest.
Got it. Everyone clear on that? Okay. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great, all right.
Okay, item, or number three was the minimum interest rate for cash balance benefit program. That's on TRB 230. This one was, again, based on 30-year treasury, and the recommendation is to increase to 3.12%.
And this is for the CB plan?
This is for the cash balance plan, yeah.
Part-time faculty and, entertain a motion? Okay, it's been moved, seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, so fourth is the minimum interest rate for the defined benefit supplement program, and the recommendation is the same as for the CB, 3.12%.
It's straightforward. It's been moved? Seconded? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, that's adopted.
Okay, so item five is the employer contribution rate for elected officials of employee organizations. For the past several years, the board policy has resulted in a contribution rate that is equal to the employer contribution rate indicated in the DB program. This year, in light of the governor's proposal and the fact that that rate might change, we changed the resolution slightly to indicate that the rate should equal to whatever ends up being the employer rate for the DB program, in that it exceeds the threshold that is set in the board policy, which depends on whether it's 2% at 60 or 2% at 62, so as long as it's greater than 10%, which it is expected to be.
And right now, based on the proposal that was released today, we would expect this, if it remains as is and it's adopted as what was released by the governor today, that it would be 16.7%. But as Jordan mentioned, we worded the resolution slightly differently to kind of say, as long as the rate that is effective July 1st exceeds the two minimum thresholds, then it will be that rate.
Okay.
You can see that on page 235.
235 on the resolved section.
Yeah, under resolved, correct.
Great, thank you.
Can you say that again?
That's okay, I go on TRB, make sure you're on TRB 235.
Say that again, so that's true.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so maybe I'll give you just a touch of background, too. So, anytime, so in those cases, so we have a board policy that says that the employer rate for those types of leave has to be at least equal to the, remember when Mark and Nick talked about the normal cost? So, the board policy says that whatever we charge employer, it has to be at least equal to the normal cost minus what we collect from the members, so that both of them combined would cover the cost of the benefit, which is normal cost. And when we do that calculation, we get 10.307% for the two at 60 members, and 7.658% for the two at 62 members. So, those are the two rates that we can, we shouldn't, according to board policies, we should not charge less than that.
Okay.
And then, so, so basically, in this case, we have, what we have this year is, we have a situation where we still don't know for sure what the employer rate will be July 1st. Statute today says 18.13. The governor today made, released his budget that says, I would like it to be 16.7, but until the budget is passed, the law says 18.13. So, instead of having you adopt a rate today, forcing us to come back again in July to change it, we decided to word the resolution to say that it will be equal to the rate effective next fiscal year, as long as that rate is greater than those two minimum thresholds. And right now, we expect the rate to be higher than those.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
That's a clever way to word it, so you don't have to come back to us.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. All right. I entertain a motion to adopt. Okay, it's been moved, seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Okay, the sixth item is the employer contribution rate for the Reduced Workload Program, and the board policy on setting this rate is the same as it is for elected officials of employee organizations, so the recommendation is the same, and that resolution's on TRB 238. The language is the same, correct, yeah?
All right, okay. Questions about that? Okay, been moved, seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, so finally, item seven is, sets the contribution rates for, that are charged to members when they elect to purchase additional service credit. Service credit can be purchased for many reasons, including maternity or paternity leave, non-member service, or out-of-state service. The rates charged are predominantly driven by the actuarial assumptions that are in place, and as they haven't changed since the previous year, we're recommending no changes, and after analyzing the purchases that have been made, we're recommending no changes, and we don't anticipate recommending any changes to these rates until such a time as we've adjusted the assumptions. And the specific table of rates that are being recommended are on TRB 244, and the resolution is on TRB 243.
And then, just to clarify for some of our newborn members, this is for service credit purchases that are allowed by statute, and it's mostly, if you ever heard the term airtime before, airtime no longer exists, but members can still buy a service, but mostly for situations where they were maybe unable to work. For example, they stay home because they gave birth, and because, or you go, if you're in the military and so forth, there are instances in which members can still buy a service, and those are the factors that would be used if they elect to do so.
I bought permits of service credit. I was a speech pathologist in Washington, in Seattle, when I went to grad school, and so I'm paying this interest over 10 years. Okay. Any questions about that? Resolutions on TRB 243? I would entertain a motion? Seconded? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's been approved, too, Jordan.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
These are all the action items, and we have one last item.
Okay.
It's an information item, then an action. This is what was alluded at the beginning. So, as you know, it's been five years since our funding plan has been passed, and July 1st, 2019, is when we are required to submit a report to the legislature on the progress of our funding plan. So, that's why we're here. So, attached to the agenda item, starting on TRB 248, is the draft report that we proposed to submit to the legislature. If you recall, back in January, we had a lengthy discussion on what should be included in that report. So, all of the topics you've seen that are included in the report is what we discussed back in January. And again, this is an information item. We are not asking you to adopt the report, but what we are looking from you today is any feedbacks or comments you may have on the report. Once we've gathered your feedbacks, our plan is to work with our, with Grant's staff in our communication group, to have them help us turn this document into a beautiful public, CalSTRS official publication.
A infographic.
Yes, correct. So, that's sort of what we So that's sort of what we will be looking to. So what I thought I could do with you today, it is a lengthy report because we're trying to cover various areas of our funding. So what I thought I would do to help you is maybe just, we'll go one section at a time and I'm just going to highlight briefly the key point we're trying to make in each of the section. Okay? So page, so if you start with TRB 248, that's our executive summary. And what we were trying to do with the executive summary was to, if someone just wanted to get a good idea of what's happening with our funding plan, they could just read the first four pages and get the gist of what's happening. And main messages here is not any different than what you heard today. Funding plan is working. We expect to reach near full funding. And so we have, we remind the reader that without the funding plan, we were expected to run out of assets. That can be seen on TRB 249. We have a chart here that kind of shows with and without the funding plan. On the following page, on two fifty, this is the pie chart you saw earlier today, just basically showing the reader, when you look at our overall unfunded liability of a hundred and seven billion dollars, who's responsible for what? So, and the main message we've been telling everyone is based on the rules and the funding plan, employers are responsible for about two-thirds of our unfunded liability today. So that's the, and the other third is the state. And we do highlight here and highlight in the rest of the report the fact that we have an unallocated portion for which you as a board have, you have no authority to adjust contribution rates eliminated. So that's highlighted in the report. And then we also highlight where the contribution rates are heading. So, and then at the, in bottom of page two fifty-one, we kind of highlight some of the key points. Again, the funding plan is working, but there are still some risks. And then we go into more details later.
David, can I just ask, are you?
Yes.
So are you present, are you, are you guys presenting this to the legislature?
No, at this point, I think we just intend to do a written submission and maybe discuss the content with our stakeholders, with the administration, unless there is a specific request from the legislature to go and do a formal presentation.
So it's kind of us just doing our due diligence. We said we would submit a report, we're doing that. But I just, I guess I'm wondering, as you're walking through this, you know, legislature, a lot of them don't even realize teachers don't contribute to social security or, you know, things like that. And so I just wonder how it's received or how it's, you know, do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
How they would understand the report, quite frankly.
Yeah, we'll put a nice cover letter to put some good context in it with the, you know, so we could build in a bigger picture of the retirement scene. And then, of course, when Joyce Lynn and her staff make legislative visits, this becomes part of those key talking points in the coming year. But we view this, it's a physical transmittal for the most part.
Does it go to the whole legislature? It does? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Good, yeah. It's exciting.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great. And I think it's a great tool for us to use to engage with the legislature because I really just think they need to understand the system better. And I think this is a great tool to show them how our funding plan is working so far. So it's very encouraging.
And we try to write the.
I'm sorry, I've got some people on the line, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was realizing, I'm just, all right, Bill?
Yeah, just a comment. And first of all, I thought this was a terrific document. I mean, for me, you know, being new, I was able to get a basic, sort of fundamental understanding of the history and all of that. It was very, very well done. And I commend you and your staff for all of the good work on it. And the point I was going to make is in these bullet points, for those legislators or the staff of legislators that may only read the introduction part, if there was a way, or maybe even in a cover letter, to acknowledge the impact of the governor's proposals, you know, both the January proposal and the supplemental proposal made, you know, or released today, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, we will, yeah, we will take that into account, thank you.
Thanks.
Good question. Dana?
So David, I apologize for being out of the room for part of your presentation, or most of your presentation, I should say. If we went to the graph that's on two sixty-one, I know that one of the hardest things for a lot of people to wrap their mind around is the nineteen ninety benefit structure, the post nineteen ninety, the unallocated. And I'm wondering, would it be, and it, and I hope I'm, I'm hoping I'm understanding it right. And I will echo what Bill said. I really enjoyed, I learned stuff from this report that I didn't know. So I really appreciated it and I thought it was well-written. But going back to that particular graph, would it be accurate and more understandable if we relabeled the post nineteen ninety benefit to being what is the, the structure that was from nineteen ninety to twenty fourteen? And then the unallocated to post twenty fourteen?
I guess it's a.
I don't, I don't know if that would help any, but am I at least understanding the structure of it correctly?
This is great feedback. Because then it tells me maybe we need to relabel this a little bit better. It's a little different than what your, both of the bars on the right-hand side relate to the post nineteen ninety benefit structure. They cover different periods of service.
Right.
The employer is only responsible for service accrued up to two thousand and fourteen.
Up nineteen ninety, up to two forty.
For the post nineteen ninety benefit structure. The unallocated is also the post ninety benefit structure, but for service accrued after the funding plan was adopted. So we will find a way in our final report to, we will. It's great feedback, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. You done?
Yep.
Okay, Nora?
I actually thought it was also a very great report. And I was thinking that maybe we should also send it to not only the administrators, but the school board members. I mean, in a link, but just be very intentional about it because I think the conversations that I have with school members across the state is always is, well, what, you know, it's not working and, you know, so.
Sky is falling.
I did, sky is falling. And so I think this is a really important document for not only our stakeholders, but I think for school board members because there's so much changes in every election. There's a lot of new school members that really, you know, the amount of things that they're dealing with, sometimes this is just kind of a document, I think that would be very helpful as a cheat sheet. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think we'll work with Grant's group to make sure that it's all distributed to all of our various stakeholders in the most appropriate way.
That's great. Lynn?
Thank you. Again, just want to echo, it's a great report. And to Nora's comments, I think that is important, to make sure that the local school districts have seen this report. And I'm wondering if when you send it out, if you could also link to one of the board education sessions that you've done in the past, because I think that it's been very good, the way you've broken down every section of it, makes it very understandable. And I'm also wondering, I know that the next report for this one is due in five years. So what is the plan going forward, like next year and the year after, just to keep the legislature and stakeholders in the loop?
So our, our plan, so as, as we've done in the, every year in the past, you hear from us in the spring when we present evaluation, you hear from us when we present our risk report in November. But behind the scene, what we've done every year, as we prepare our risk report, we've talked with the administration, we've talked with individuals at the legislature, we've talked with our stakeholders to make sure everyone is aware. So I think our intent is to continue to, to, to bring those issues and to discuss these topics with the administration, the legislature. And, and we're more than happy to continue working with Grant. If there's a desire by the board that we try to have a bigger outreach going forward, we can certainly attempt to make a, a continued effort to keep the legislature well-informed of our situation and how it evolves. Because as you know, we need to monitor this every year. We cannot just say, oh, next report is in five years. And you can be sure that that's what we do on a daily basis.
Well, I, I think also, David, the risk, if we do not keep the conversation going on our side, the, the volume of crowding out stories is just incredible. You know, the ones we read almost every day in our clips. It isn't just about CalSTRS, it's about Calipers, it's about a local government story. And so there, if you don't, if you're not participating in that conversation, that is going to take over us. And I just, I think it's absolutely adamant, we continue to socialize the November risk report. We constantly, when we see those critical crowding out stories, we respond. Grant's working on a response right now to some misinformation that was printed in a recent newspaper. So we've got to, we've got to be active in the dialogues all the time now. It just, it's getting concerning. The level of that conversation.
I think that's a really great point, Jac. And, you know, I think it's also very good, the past couple of years that you've been doing the joint legislative hearing too at the beginning of the year. And I think that that does help set the stage. And it's another point where you share this message, so I think that's been helpful.
I think the answer is yes. The board would encourage you to communicate often. And I think Nora's suggestion about the, the school board members and, like, I do think on the employer side, there's that perception that somehow CalSTRS is bankrupting their budgets and they can't afford teacher pay raises or things like that. So I think as much as we can get the word out, the funding plan's working and doing that on a consistent basis only helps all the different, you know, constituent groups that we work with, so.
And we will continue. And if you've never seen them, we've actually, Grant and his wonderful staff have put together some, some wonderful fact sheets about our funding, the budget.
I have seen them.
I think you've seen those, yeah. And, yeah, and they do a fabulous job with those. And they make very handy discussion tools with stakeholders.
Those graphs are really handy. I just always say the line's going up. That's a good, we want the line going up. It's as simple as that. Dana?
The talk about socializing, it kind of brings to mind some other things that maybe we can do with some of the information. If we do push this out electronically, the link that was included in the report in attachment one on page two seventy-three doesn't work. So let's, just, if we're going to push it out electronically, let's make sure all our links work.
We will.
Would there be a way, and maybe this is to Jac and to Grant, because of all the stories that are coming out there, is there a way to put this into, not necessarily a link to this actual report, but to try to put it into plain language that we could then put on our social media sites? Or maybe a link to the one-pagers or something that people, just that are out there that are looking at our social media could then link to, so that CTA's retirement committee can put something in their CTA retirement committee report to state council, then state council reps can, can do whatever they do through their social networks. And then it gets to be even a much broader audience that then can defend against some of the, the media that's coming out, Jac, that you're talking about?
I think that'd be good. I know, Grant, if you want to talk to it specifically, we do need partners though in the communication. Even, even when there's an overt attack on CalSTRS in an op-ed, which there are at times, you know, we can respond to it forcefully. But again, a reader can dismiss us too because it's, it'll be self-serving.
Absolutely.
So you need partners in those communications to give legitimacy to your point. So I, I think it's well-taken. And Grant, I don't know if you want to add to that or what you're thinking? Just, but, but, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to pop up in a minute anyway and, and cover some of this. But, yeah, in terms of, one of the things that we often do is when we have a lengthier report, we'll do a fact sheet to put on top of it and find multiple ways to push it out. And so certainly with the funding report, we will do that. Also, and, and that will go on top of what the, that'll go along with what the legislature gets. We'll probably put a link to that in the board highlights after the July meeting. And to Nora's point about getting it to a school board and other educators, we've stepped up a little bit our communication to employers. And so we'll, you know, through the quarterly meetings we have with employer representative advocates, we'll include it in that. So we find multiple ways to get it out. And Joyce Lynn and her team do regular meetings at the Capitol, you know, not necessarily targeted at specific legislation, but just to keep our messages out there. And funding is always at the top of that messaging. Yep, so we will.
So Grant, I would, I would recommend, particularly on the op-eds that are coming in papers that we want to respond to and trying to find local leaders, let's partner with our constituency groups, AXA, CTA, AFT, or CFT, to try to find authors that would be locally that would be able to.
That's a good idea, and we've done that before.
Yeah, I knew that.
Ping all of you to see if you can help point me in that direction because it feels like, you know, in the last month or so, every week we're writing, trying to get space to do a response to editorial board piece or an op-ed or something, so.
Absolutely.
This is just a draft, this is, this is not the kind of finished product of the report, right? Or it is?
Yeah, I think right now, we're, I guess the, we don't plan to change the main message. I think right now, we're, our plan is if you, if, you know, we may tweak if, like, for example, we got feedback on the charts, we're probably going to try to see if there's a better way to present it. But otherwise, I think all we're probably going to do is, is to change the look of it rather than the message.
But I just wondered, do we, do, I know we do press releases all the time. I mean, will we do like a press release on the report that will go out? Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm thinking about ways of being.
Yeah, I'm not sure we'll use.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah, I think we'll push it, but I'm not sure that the press release is the right vehicle for.
Whatever you think is the right vehicle. I don't know, but I'm just saying, typically these reports, they go to legislature and they just kind of.
Yeah.
Go, right? And they sort of sit on a desk or sit in a.
That's why we like to do the short fact sheet so that hopefully.
Yeah, we have to repackage it.
Be more read.
Yeah.
Oh Karen, oh, sorry.
Do we have relationships with any think tanks or, you know, university economists that might.
Be able to add a little bit more of an objective endorsement of what has been happening here in terms of, you know, looking at this and saying, this is a, you know, this, this is a model that seems to be working in a country that has a lot of other states that don't have pension fund plans working. This is, this is a model. It seems to me that, you know, the, the critics have gained a lot more foothold, it appears to me.
Yeah.
At universities.
Yeah.
Especially at Stanford.
Yeah.
And, and so.
We're aware.
And so, you know, this game has been played by the other side fairly well. And I'm just asking if we can maybe find our own.
Very fair comment. In fact, you know, I don't mind calling out the professor specifically. We, we have audited a professor, University of Missouri, right?
Yes.
Though that's, yeah, this is, but we, we most recently have a professor from University of Missouri that's made a bit of an occupation studying us and doing stories about us of late. And was on a webinar with Grant, actually. And, and, so we do need to have that kind of academic rebuttal, I think, as well.
And there are organizations that we've worked with, the National Institute of Retirement Security, put out studies that recognize our funding.
It's a great story.
Yeah.
It is. It took us a long time to get here, but it's a great story.
But your, your point is well taken, Bill. I think that, you know, you have the credibility of Stanford and messages coming from the other side that. Karen?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what was said before the, the report. The draft report is really a lot of information, good information. But I like the conclusion at the end because it kind of, if you just looked at that, you could see what, everything is there. And if you don't know anything about it, it kind of helps you. And then the last paragraph saying that we will, you will, we will continue to monitor, I think that's really important as well, so I like that.
Great.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else in line, David. Is there anything else you want to say?
No, unless you want me to talk about more about it. It looks like everyone was happy with the message we have so far, so.
Absolutely.
Good.
We've got time for actual jokes, I think.
Keep up the good work. Great, I think that's, I think, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I think we're all set. Thank you, David. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Jordan and Rick. Everyone? I know, I got to come up with some actuarial jokes. I don't know, I don't have any, but I, sure.
Actuaries should be the only people that are allowed to.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's just hard enough to say actuaries.
I'll send you the link to the website.
Oh, I'm sure there is one. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Good seeing you guys again.
Okay. So Jac, I'm just going to kind of move us along if that's, I think we're at.
Yeah, item seven.
Item seven, state and federal legislation, Grant and Joyce Lynn.
Maybe take a break after that and see, check energy levels and.
Sounds good.
See how we feel for the rest of the agenda. We were, we were going to save eight and nine for tomorrow, but we can, depending upon how energy levels are, we can go as far as you like in the rest of the agenda.
I think we should do this item, take a break, and I think we, I'll check in with the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Grant.
It's sort of rare this time of year that we come to you without requesting that you take a position on a piece of legislation. take a position on a piece of legislation, but that's good news, and that'll make this a little quicker, and I'll hand it over to Joyce Lynn for the update.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know, I thought that was very interesting. I have no bills for you to take positions on at this point in time. So everything has moved. You've seen all these bills before, but since March, everything has picked up. The legislature's been busy, and in fact, some things have changed since what you'll find on your TRB 281 and 282. So I'll go ahead and just run through the list and update you on where things are at. Just quickly, the appropriations committee deadline, so when fiscal bills have to be moved out of appropriations into the floor, is May 17th, so next Friday. And so if any of these bills are noted on the suspense file, there'll be a hearing next week where they'll go through all of those bills, and we'll see whether the two we have listed move forward to the assembly floor. And then all of the bills will go through fourth session. They'll also be dealing with the budget, so kind of over the next two weeks, if you happen to look at the daily files, which show the schedule for the legislature, every day, all of the subcommittees in both houses are listed as potentially taking up any items that they need to, based on the may revise or any other actions they have to take before they get to the point where they have to approve the budget on June 15th. And then committees on policy issues will resume after that. Again, at the top of the list, AB 33, divestment from private prisons. This bill actually was not heard in committee, so the author made a decision, I believe the night before the hearing, to not have the bill heard. So that bill remains in committee. It is a two-year bill, so it is possible that it could come back next year before the deadlines and move forward, but at this point, it's not moving. AB 181, as you'll note, is in the Assembly Appropriations Committee on the Suspense File. The usual rules for the suspense file are if the bill costs over a certain amount of money. So the committees like to look at all of those bills together to determine what they want to spend money on for the coming year. AB 181 actually is a low-cost bill and doesn't actually meet the threshold, but in the Assembly Committee on Appropriations, their policy is to move all reporting bills to the suspense file, so they consider those as a block. So we'll see what happens to that next week. AB 644 is our sponsored annual housekeeping bill. That bill has actually moved to the assembly floor. It's been on consent the entire way, so moved through Policy Committee and Appropriations is on, and is on the second-day consent calendar today, and may have actually moved off the floor already into the Senate. So that bill's moving very smoothly. AB 706, removing the three-year timeline on which leave can be moved forward to the next employer, has actually already made it all the way through the assembly and is on to the Senate, waiting for assignment to the Policy Committee, likely the Education Committee. Going to the next page, AB 1320, divestment from Turkish investment vehicles on the suspense file in Assembly Appropriations. It did meet the threshold for cost, so we will see what the committee determines to do next week. Our next sponsored bill, AB 1452, kind of housekeeping around membership provisions that we have in our law, has kind of been moving along the same track as AB 644, on consent the entire way, on the second-day consent calendar today on the assembly floor, and likely moved to the Senate with the vote this morning. And the last bill we'll look at is SGR 3, which is requesting Congress and the President to repeal the windfall elimination provision and the government pension offset, has actually also moved all the way through its House of Origin, moved through the Senate, and is at the Assembly Desk, waiting for assignment to Policy Committee. There's actually no change on either of the federal bills, so they remain in the committees they've been in. And that's really the update.
All right. Lynn?
Hi, so I have one question on the language. Alameda County Office of Ed was looking at putting in regarding the payments for charter schools, or how that repeat issue. Do you know what that stands right now?
Thank you, that's a great question, and I'll just address that. On the charter school front, we do remain engaged in conversations for any kinds of proposals that relate specifically to CalSTRS. There's obviously a lot going on in the charter school world, not, or the bulk of them don't relate to CalSTRS work. On the proposal you're discussing, there has been language drafted, there's been discussions that have gone on. I think everybody is understanding Alameda County's proposal. It has not actually been amended into a vehicle yet.
Okay, are you expecting it will this season?
I'm expecting it will, and so we will bring it to you as soon as the board meeting after it gets amended into its vehicle, if it's, makes sense time-wise.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. And then the other proposal related to us that is out there is mandatory membership in CalSTRS and CalPERS for charter school employees. So that is also not in a vehicle yet. I think the discussions are not as far along as the Alameda County proposal, so we'll stay tuned in to those and keep you updated. So thanks for the question.
Dana?
So I appreciate that we're staying on top of the stuff that's coming out of charters, because I know that while we're not taking positions on those, they're out there. And Grant and I've had a conversation about things that touch us, even just tangentially, I think that if, if we could just get a list of them, because I think that, I think it's important for us to know what's out there. So like the charter bill stuff, I think that would have been important for us to know about as, as they started to be developed and started to move through their houses. And it's not like we need an analysis, but if we're aware of it, I think that's really good. I know there's a bunch of stuff out there in education that really doesn't pertain to us, but if it comes close, could we at least just get a listing on our report so we're, we have some concept that it's out there? Because we have educators that are talking to us about it.
Got it.
And we don't even have any idea what's going on, so that would be great.
So in addition to the bills that are in the matrix that were included in your board packet, we actually are tracking about 200 bills that tangentially affect us, either as a state agency, so for example, through how we're supposed to contract with entities, how our HR department has to work, how facilities are affected. So all of those are generally things that we track. We also track all charter school bills, so I have a list right here. Again, we don't analyze them and how they work, because we don't have that expertise, but we do make sure we keep an eye on them. Some of the other ones related to education, we do keep track of as well, kind of related to teacher credentialing or programs that may, you know, create types of teachers, if you will, subject matter, credible service. So types of activities that we count as credible service, because they become something that the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing is going to provide a credential for. And so that would be someone we would look forward to being a member someday, because they are now certificated. And so we do track that, we share those with the business areas who are interested, who get that kind of information from employers. So yeah, I'd be happy to provide all of those lists to you, and again, on all sorts of different topics.
Yeah, I think it makes some sense for us to sit down maybe offline and talk with our educator members, and then look at sending out, you know, if we can, I don't think it's